All right.
You all set?
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six oh two P M. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joseph Schenk present.
Chaz Sexton Duranian present.
Veronica Kell present. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded and it should be live on channel nine. So, welcome to our first open meeting of, since the emergency order. So, we'll be doing open meetings until we find out differently from the legislature, as will all boards in town. The requirements of open meeting law are that we be present in open session and that a quorum of the board be present. It's allowable for one member of the board, or as long as a quorum is present, for other members of the board to call in. So, from time to time, that will happen for our meetings. And we'll talk about other options later in our meeting with T-CAM, but, so that's it. Chairman's additions and deletions, one point four. I want to first adjust two point five on our appointment schedule. This is our appointment with T-CAM. I learned last night that we are not gonna be doing the bylaws review. What about the ATM funding request, Dave? I didn't think so.
That's being held up a little bit, too.
Okay. At annual town meeting, the town approved funds being transferred to T-CAM, but on their request. So, that, that needs to be, they need to request to get the funds, is what I'm saying. So, that needs to be at a different time, and I have added, though, we're keeping the appointment, and I have added a little talk on the owl, which is a device that would allow one person in the room to, there to be a Zoom link with one person in the room on Zoom, and then the, we'll talk about it later. And then it moves around. It's really pretty cool. So, there's that. Other adjustments?
Madam Chairman, you had addition and deletions. I'd like to make an addition, please.
These are the chairman's additions and deletions?
Yes, I did.
So, I am the chairman, so I am not, I am looking to myself and my board for adding to the meeting. If you had something-
I would like to make an addition to the agenda this evening, Madam Chairman.
And I am denying the addition. You are welcome in public comment period to comment, but the people that add to the agenda of the meeting are the people sitting at this table.
As elected official for eighteen years, you're not gonna allow me the opportunity to add to that?
That is correct. If you would like something on a future agenda, feel free-
Madam Chairman, as I depart, I want you to know the problem with conservation is you, and only you. And the letter that was sent with the best of intent so we can get help in your office was denied and rejected. And your apparent attempt to suspend our chairperson is totally wrong.
Thank you for your comments. Back to one point four, chairman's additions and deletions. We'll be adding under Town Administration Updates and Reports, five point one point two, interim accountants, the contracts. Those came in last night. We had hoped to have them for our meeting yesterday, but we didn't. And also five point one point three, lease for summer rec. We'll add that there. And I think that's all I have. How about you two?
I have nothing. I don't have you.
Anything, Chaz?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. All right. Public comment period. I think we already had that. So, I'm gonna move on to one point six.
Did I miss anything?
Review, I don't know. Review and approve the meeting minutes.
Can anybody else comment?
Do you have a comment?
I don't, but I said we already had it, and I think I'd only heard Jim get mad and then-
And leave.
But you didn't ask nobody. I don't know, maybe there is somebody else.
I don't know. I think that the way I'm gonna handle this in the future is, if you have a comment, you can send it to the chair forty-eight hours prior, and we can add, you know, take that at that time. Joe, public comment period?
I just, what you just said as far as forty-eight hours prior to send. I personally, I'm not speaking for the board, but one of my biggest problems I had with the three people sitting here is when it came time for public session, they were not allowed to speak, and I feel the public has to be able to speak.
I agree with you.
I, I just, I do not want, can I finish? I'm sorry. I do not want to sit here and not give the opportunity, but I wanted to be well clear that this isn't a time to bash anybody. Us bash the public, the public bash the board. If there's public comment that needs to be brought into the table, I think we should listen, and I should, I feel it's appropriate. There's a lot going on right now for everybody, all boards, all departments, and we need to work together, and we got to come to some kind of common ground. So, I don't know what you would like to do, Madam Chair, but as far as my concern of the public having to send it forty-eight hours, I'm not in favor of that, but I'm only one person.
No, I'm good with it being a public comment period. I just am not good with the public deciding to take things out of turn. That's all.
I, I agree, Madam Chair.
So, Chaz?
Well, my thoughts on the matter is that I, I agree partially with Mr. Schenk. I believe the public needs to have the ability to express. What I do not want is exactly what happened. This is not a forum for anybody. I'd like to, to have a decorum when it comes to that. If we had maybe a sign-up sheet in the beginning of the meeting that they can sign up to say that they want a public, public comment during it, like we do in other boards, I think that would be appropriate. That way, if we have several people that wanna make a comment, we can limit the time to each one, but I do believe that we should allow the public to speak.
I, I agree. I just don't want the out-of-turn-ness that, you know, the disruption of the agenda. So, I think the sign-up sheet is a good idea, so.
Might I make a comment, please? My hand is up.
Cindy's was up first.
Yeah, I, yeah, thank you. I just wanna talk about that, that forty-eight hour in response. But the public comment period, often when a member of the community has something to say, the decision that something to say doesn't necessarily come up until we're here, or until we see the agenda. The agenda doesn't, has to be published forty-eight hours, but if we have to give our public comment forty-eight hours in advance, then-
No, you don't have to give the comments. Just sign up.
I know, I know, but that was- I know, but that was, that was the discussion, so that was kind of what I'm just saying. I just wanted to speak on the public, the, the stuff that you're talking about, the public comment.
So, what you're saying is-
There's, it should be, I like the idea of it being open, and, and sometimes, as, as I can attest to, and all of you can as well, that sometimes that decorum is hard to control. And it, not that I, I'm suggesting that anybody lose control in, in this meeting. I would have preferred it myself that people had done a better job, but sometimes you can't, you, you can't see what's gonna, you can't see what some of the aggravation is, and sometimes people do get emotional when they're here and they're trying to be heard and they're trying to get their points made as a member of the public. I understand that from both sides of that table. So, I just, I think not, I don't like the sign-up either. I think that when we come in and we raise our hand, 'cause sometimes that public comment might not be even thought about until after we're sitting here talking, so. And then is, there's a time limit. As I recall, that when the, when the selectmen's policy was put into place about public comment period, that there was a time limit for the whole comment period. It doesn't just go on and on and on because there's ten people that wanna speak. That there's a certain amount of time that's allocated on the agenda for public comment period, and the chair has to control how those comments are gonna be done, which could be a challenge, I know, but-
We are already at the point where we need to move on.
I don't like this, yep, and I'm sorry, and I'll stop talking, thank you.
So, Jim, your phone.
Just a brief comment in this. I, I'm not sure what Jim just said, but it didn't seem like it set well with you as the selectman because it probably is town of voice, but I think it's gonna be very important, more so than ever, that we, as people from the town, should be heard in open meetings in comment, as long as people are thoughtful and demonstrate-
I agree.
-good respect, good respect and restraint to their comment, and do it appropriately. I find it should be no problem melding this into the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
In my opinion, Jim, I just think, Jim wanted to get something across. I, I appreciate him trying. I did have conversation with him today, and I think I had conversation with you today. And everyone's got a different take on where they wanna go and what they do. But I don't think coming into a meeting with guns blaring is gonna get us anywhere. The same statement I made when this whole thing started, that that particular letter could've came to us in a different tone, a different manner, and things would've been handled differently. But we dealt the cards we dealt with, and we're gonna move forward with that the way it is. I feel every board, every committee, including myself, or all of us as a chair, took an oath, sworn in, to uphold the rules and regulations and law of the town and do the work. When that's not happening, it creates a problem, and so we gotta figure some common ground to move forward.
I think we veered from the general point of what we were trying to understand, and that is when people want to address you as a selectman, they do it in a prudent, polite manner as to which, it seems like Mr. Laque wasn't able to get that through in a prudent, respectful, thoughtful manner. So, I suppose that as in demonstration as we just had, we really can't have that. It's not productive, and it doesn't take anything in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to two point one. We have a guest here with us today, Senator John Cronin. Welcome.
Who are you?
Good.
Very good, Senator. Check on up to the hot seat?
Yes, please.
Oh, yes, come on up to the hot seat. Where's a good place for Senator Cronin to sit? Why not over here? There's a mic there, and that way you'll be on camera.
All right.
Pass that to him, I believe. Do we have a sign-up sheet link?
That was the mini-agenda that was put together?
Okay, perfect, great.
The questions that we had. So, welcome. We have Senator Cronin with us for ten minutes. So, and we had some questions for you for discussion. So, Chaz, do you wanna, you're the one who was instrumental in having Senator Cronin come, so if you'd like to-
I would. I reached out. As my duties, being the state representative to the housing authority, I am in contact with a lot of different people within the, within the state. And it was suggested to me when I was elected as Board of Selectmen to reach out to Senator Cronin to, to bring him in, to introduce ourselves. He and I had a conversation over the, over email. Basically, I introduced who I was and, and kind of what we're looking for. There are several different issues that the town is being faced with that I felt that would be important for us to, to talk real briefly, and we have a, a place to move forward as far as who to contact, where we, where we go, and that sort of thing. So, I just give you briefly, my name is Chaz Sexton Duranian. I was just selected as a selectman. I have been working in various boards in the town for over seven years, almost eight years now. And mostly, my, my background is housing, but I gather a lot of data for the town. Housing, population, seniors, I, veterans, you know, I, I have a pretty good idea of the demographics of what's going on in the town. And then, Joe, if you wanna introduce yourself.
I'm Joseph Schenk, from town. Been in town for forty-nine years. First time serving on the board since January.
Congratulations.
Active in the town and the community for a lot of years.
Nice to meet you, Selectman.
Thank you.
And I'm Veronica Kell. I'm on the Board of Selectmen. I've been here just about a year on the board, so we have a very young board. And, I don't know, I've lived in town for thirty-six years, and I've been on various boards in town during that time.
Great. Well, it's great to formally meet the three of you and appear before the board tonight. For those of you who don't know me, my name is, is John Cronin. I'm newly sworn in, January sixth, to the State Senate. I grew up and was raised and live now in Lunenburg, so I am right down the road and understand. My, my father was a selectman in Lunenburg a long time ago, so walking into this room and I understand the dynamics and the fun that you guys have on the board, so thank you for, for your service and all, to the town and all you get to deal with. But really, just wanna, to be here to, to make sure, to open up a line of communication. I'll, I'll give a brief update, if that's okay, on some of the things that I believe that affect the town that I've been able to, to deal with, and I'm happy to speak on the budget. We passed our budget in the State Senate a few weeks ago. But some things I've been working on, you know, I, I take bipartisanship really seriously and have a good working relationship with Representative Harrington. We've both been advocating for a grant through Mass Trails for the Squanah Cook Greenway. And, and then I think it's an exciting time to make some really important investments for the future, especially in regard to the funding that we have received from the American Rescue Plan. I know two point eight million in direct local aid is coming to Townsend, and the legislature this summer is gonna take up, I believe, a, a special supplementary budget for five point four billion in state aid that we received through the A R P. So, I think there are opportunities there for truly once-in-a-generation investments, and, and it's the right time to be having conversations between local town governments and the state legislature about what those investments are and what your needs are, so.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Absolutely.
All right, so what I read is that the town is getting nine hundred ninety-four thousand, and then there is another additional one point eight million. So, the nine ninety-four is what you get appropriated in two different services.
Yes, so my-
And the other, there's some special conditions on the one point eight million, which I can't off the top of my head tell you.
So, I, I think municipalities are gonna have wide latitude to what they can use it for. What, what I know it can't be used for is pension liabilities, but water, sewer, premium pay for essential workers here in town. Those are the type of things that I, I believe the board is gonna be able to, to direct that money to. And, and it's my understanding, too, there's gonna be two rounds for that local funding, one in twenty-one and one in twenty-two.
Correct.
So, so that's in line with my understanding, Chairwoman.
Okay, so we might wanna talk at some point about how we get the additional one point eight million, or whatever. 'Cause we got one million, it's the columns, and the, you know, I know that we get nine hundred ninety-four thousand. I don't know about the other one point eight. There were-
Yeah, and I'd be happy to follow up with, with you on that. And, and then in terms of funding from the legislature, too, and, and I think it's, it's especially important to your town and a regional school district, but the legislature made a commitment between the House and the Senate to meet its obligation in the Student Opportunity Act, and that's gonna result in this year in an increase of three point four million dollars in Chapter seventy funding to North Middlesex School District. So, I, I think that's exciting. I know, you know, I represent the Wachusett Regional District as well, and I know towns always feel squeezed by, by the contributions they have to make to support the regional district. So, I'm excited that the legislature is, is meeting the commitment that it made when it passed the S O A in twenty nineteen. But I, I think that's gonna be a, a huge boon to North Middlesex, and I've, I've had conversations with the superintendent, and I know meeting that funding level is important for, for Townsend and the surrounding region.
Okay, thank you.
Will there be ample guidelines to specifically, so the town knows just what to do with that money? Are you going to educate the town officials as to just what you can use the money for?
Yeah, absolutely.
'Cause I understand there's gonna be a multitude of different guidelines that we've gotta abide by in utilization of this funding that's coming through.
Yeah, so, so on May tenth, the U S Treasury Department issued guidance for, detailed guidance for what the A R P funding can be used for. And, and again, it's premium pay, investments in sewer, water, broadband infrastructure. And, and if you're doing sewer, water, and broadband, we're also talking about roads. And, and so I think that'll be a boon to, maybe not Chapter ninety funding, but you, you know, your Chapter ninety planning in terms of how that money's able to be used in town.
And that's, that, to me, is a big thing. We have a couple of sections in town that are in desperate need of repair, especially by the, the new high school. I know that there are other avenues that I've been working with Sheila Harrington in regards to the process and the processes that we need to follow, so.
So, they put ample money to these towns to work on our infrastructure, bridges, roads, safety issues, COVIDs, et cetera, et cetera. As long as the guidelines are available to, to the people in, in the power position to use the money, and they know and they use it wisely, that's the most important thing. I think we should all stay focused in.
Absolutely.
And I believe the key is, is something that Senator Cronin touched upon, is the collaboration. Each board and committee needs to talk to one another. I know with the boards that I'm liaison with, we make sure that we reach out and, you know, this is what we have, this is what we have coming down the pike. What can we do to help you out? Give us the information so that we can make the applications to get the funding that we need.
Key to a good, successful move.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Housing, how, how is the, how was everything going through in regards to housing for the state?
Sure, so I, I think the most, what I hope is the most transformational action that the legislature has taken in recent memory, Housing Choice passed in the Economic Development Bill of twenty twenty. And what that does is that it really decreases barriers to zoning changes in towns, right? So, there is a threshold of two, a two-thirds majority that was required for a, a bylaws or a zoning change, and that barrier has been brought down to, to fifty percent in just a majority vote. So, there are a lot of projects that weren't greenlit, because, you know, it's hard to get seventy-five percent approval, or sixty-six point six percent approval for anything instead of fifty percent. So, so I am, I am hopeful and optimistic that in the coming months and years, that greenlights more, more housing projects and decreases the barrier to changed zoning laws that, that are gonna be required to do that. But, but I think for the most part, you know, that's, that is one policy domain, housing, where I'm, I'm looking forward to working and listening to the board and seeing, there are specific housing challenges that are distinct in every town and city, and they're different in the eleven cities and towns that represent. So, certainly excited to have a dialogue now and in the future to, to how we can support your goals and increasing housing stock, making more affordable housing projects, get greenlit, funding sources for mass development, mass housing. All those things are, are conversations I'm, I'm ready and willing to have.
So, I would like to see if we can set up some kind of, doesn't necessarily have to be monthly, but, you know, at least quarterly, if we can sit down and be able to talk about some of the issues that we have. I, you know, have no problem, you know, with any information that's needed. If you wanted to let me know, then I can talk with Senator Cronin. I also have a very good relationship with Representative Harrington in regards to pointing us in the right direction going forward. And I, that's one of the reasons why I wanted you to come here, because I think that the communication, the connections within the, the legislature is really important for a town like this.
Absolutely.
You know, 'cause sometimes we feel like, you know, anything on this side of one twenty-eight doesn't really get the attention.
No, and I, and I think one thing I take seriously is, is working with my partners in the House of Representatives to go and advocate for the region and, and Townsend with one voice. And before I forget, there, there's one thing that I'm happy to report. I was able to secure a twenty thousand dollar earmark for the Townsend Senior Center and Council on Aging in the Senate budget. And there's gonna be some latitude there for, for the board, for the Council on Aging, to decide how that money gets used, but wanted to prioritize that in the budget. I know our, our seniors have really been disproportionately impacted by COVID, and that community space and organization's really gonna be key for the town.
And they've, they've been, that particular area has been very active even through COVID, following standards, but they've been keeping up with programming, food service. They've been doing a lot, so.
Yeah, so-
And we have an addition going on right now as well to the senior center building, right?
She's done a great job.
Yes, she has.
Kudos to the woman. She's done a real big job of that.
So, for that project and the infrastructure project, that, and the twenty thousand dollars will be able to be used for that.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
That's all I got?
That's all you got? All right.
Okay, great.
So, that was one of my questions. All right.
I'm happy to come back anytime and certainly happy to establish just a line of communication with the board and wanna be helpful. And my district director, Susan Templeton, is also a great contact for the board to have, and I will, I'll make sure, Chaz, I get you her email if you don't have it, but she worked for Representative Hank Notton as his staff director for thirteen years and is, is, is really a great asset on my team, too. He'll be a, a key partner, working with the board and, and moving forward.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator.
You bet.
And we invite you to stick around for about fifteen minutes if you want, because we're gonna be talking about PFAS, and our water superintendent is here, and Board of Water Commissioners. Are you the chair now, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
If you're, if you have the time and can stay.
I do. No, I look forward to it.
So, so we're gonna-
The veal with brown gravy at the Townsend House is calling me, but I can wait fifteen minutes.
All right. So, we're moving on to our six twenty-five appointment. I'm gonna try to stay as close on track as I can with the Water Department for planning the PFAS public education session. So, if you'd like to come up here and join us, you're welcome to. So, I guess, Dave, you can, you're close enough. Or you can pull up to the table. So, did we have an agenda for this? I guess what-
It was basically just kinda, we, we, we talked about it last night. Chaz is our liaison. One of the things we just wanted to kinda set up was just a basic agenda for the meeting. Kinda go over who we'd like to attend. You guys, if you have questions that need to get asked or whatever. It's not an easy thing to explain. It's, it can be extremely concerning to people. But, so what I was thinking was a basic introduction about how we got to where we are, going from the EPA regs, the U C M R, the unmonitored contaminant monitoring rule, to where Mass went, and the testing results, and then kinda go by, you know, what we have for plans, what our actions are, what are being required of us by D E P. Allow anyone that wants to speak. A couple of the people I was thinking about was, is it Mary Jude at D E P? Is that her first name?
Yeah.
Mary Jude and Jennifer Peterson, and did you wanna?
Ty and Vaughn?
Yes.
We're not giving Ty a plan laid out.
Yeah. Ty, Ty and Vaughn is the engineering company, or firm, excuse me. So, those are, come the primaries. I'd love to invite the senator and the representative to be there. I think you're gonna need a grasp on this, on the depth of how pervasive these chemicals are, what it means to people with private wells, what it means to municipalities. I'm a member of Mass Water Works. I'm on the technical committee for PFAS. What's being asked of the communities in regards to this, water municipalities, is, it's a big ask. If you look at the Water Infrastructure Finance Report, I think of twenty eighteen, and this is before we even considered PFAS. Massachusetts was somewhere on the order of twenty-eight billion dollars shortfall to meet current regulations. Some of these plants, in addition, their addition to other plants are anywhere from three to five million dollars. Engineering them are difficult, and it's no one's fault. This stuff has probably been in, in and around us since the nineteen sixties. The instrumentation to detect these probably didn't exist until about four or five years ago. To detect them this low probably didn't exist until about a year and a half ago. It's in everything that you use. They just had a federal legislative bipartisan bill put- They just had a federal legislative bipartisan bill put before Congress to outlaw it in makeup. They analyzed makeup in almost any brand, any type of makeup you can think of. This stuff is in it. So it's going to be an issue not just for Townsend, and it's obviously not, it's statewide. But I know a lot of the communities that are affected, a lot of the water operators, and they're going to be asking the state and if not federal government for help. So it is something you definitely should have in your radar, sir. So I would definitely like to invite him. And then open it up to questions.
Okay, so we're looking at being in the great hall.
Yep.
And open it up to as many individuals that, that we can in great hall. Do we want to run it like a public hearing or just a public forum, Madam Chair? I'm not really sure what you're.
I, I would, okay, so I'm writing the agenda as Todd was speaking. I would do it as a public forum. I don't think as a hearing.
Yep.
And so if we're in the great hall, I guess the question then becomes date. And the agenda, I have how we got where we are, what it is, and where, where is it?
Where are we going?
And, yeah, where are we going? So let me get, let me get that speakers, I have Ty and Vaughn, Senator Cronin. Aren't you glad you came? Representative Harrington. And, and then, who?
Jennifer Peterson, if I, if she's available, is the executive director of Mass Water Works. And then I was thinking Mary Jude of Central Region, DEP.
DEP, Mary Jude.
Or whoever's available.
So what does it mean to private well owners and public water supply? And what are we doing about it?
Right. Do we want to leave the private wells off? That's not really in the drinking, the water department's purview.
I think it's important to leave it on because I think that people, we have a private well. I think that people have, who have private wells need to know what, what, what they should do about it. If, if it's in the public water supply, is it in the private? And you don't know.
No, there's, and I mean, this stuff, I've been around hazardous chemicals, contamination plumes. Most of my professional life is either analytical chemistry or in water. This stuff does not act like anything I've ever seen. You know, they've now detected it up at P's, down as, down as deep as eighteen hundred feet in bedrock wells. You know, and it doesn't seem to act the same in similar situations. I've talked to other communities that are gravel-packed wells that are getting affected. And, you know, you, you have some that in the wintertime, the amount drops off by fifty percent. You have others that the numbers in winter decrease where the summer numbers drop off. So there is no set pattern. And to be honest with you, you know, trying to find out where it's coming from. I mean, I went down so many rabbit holes where I worked trying to look for it, I gave up. It is just, you know, I'll leave that Bureau Wayside cleanup and stuff like that. The main thing we need to concentrate on as a community is what do we do? What are we doing in, in, in going forward? But also get good information out there. If you, I'm going to be honest, if you Google this on T, on the internet, you are going to come up with so many things that scare you. I guess the best phrase I've come across is the water is no more safe or unsafe than it was yesterday. We just know more about it. And, you know, give us, give us the time to be able to fix it, the support to fix it. Nobody did anything wrong, nobody. This stuff was never illegal. It was put into just about everything that you have in your house. To give you an idea, I take the samples for the water utility I work at. Told this story until I'm blue in the face. So that I don't contaminate the sample when I take it. I cannot use any personal care products forty-eight hours prior. I cannot use my normal work attire, it has to be untreated cotton clothing. We had somewhere in the order of twenty-five sample sites. We stripped them. We had to make them PFAS free, that meant no Teflon caulking tape. We had to make sure there was no Teflon tubing. We went to stainless steel and copper. We pulled the wells to make sure there were no Teflon taper, caulking in the housing of the wells. It, what you can, what actually can add to this, and to give you an idea, we're talking twenty parts per trillion. That's not for one compound, that's for a combination of the six that they've set. One part per trillion is one ink drop in twenty Olympic swimming pools. The federal limit is seventy for PFOA and PFOS. Yes, sir?
I think they're changing that very quick. Back to recommendations on the call below one.
You cannot see, well, I respectfully, I'll disagree with you, sir, you can't see below two, so I don't know how you set a regulation below one.
Well, that's, that's exactly what NSF says.
Well, to finish.
Exactly what NSF says.
So we'll discuss at the public forum. I guess what I'd like to know is where, what's the date? Do you have a thought on that and where are we advertising it? How will it be advertised?
Well, how do we normally advertise a public forum or something of this nature? Do we do it in the paper and on the website?
We can do, yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Our, our goal is, and I just want to throw this out because I've had many conversations with the water department. This is an education, this is for everybody to, to, to get a better education on what's going on. And this is our proactive approach to do something before we're regulated really to do anything. We want to make sure that the community understands what is going on and what we're going to do. Now, there's also a, a master water plan that's, that's part of this as well. And I think that also can play a part in letting the town know exactly what we're doing to remediate a lot of this.
No, and to be honest with the residents, that plan, we updated it recently. And that put us a lot further ahead than we would have been, we weren't, weren't planning for this. We were planning for other things, you know, capacity and making sure we could upkeep if there was a, a change in the population business or whatever. But it allowed us to be a little bit further ahead and take intermediate steps to reduce the, the potential impact of that one well.
Correct.
And so going forward, we're, like I said, we're, we're a little bit further ahead maybe than we would have been, would have been if we hadn't been preparing for something else, you know, with Cross Street and Main Street plans.
So as far as dates go, do we want to go on a night when the water commissioners normally meet? Where, how is the, the people that you're inviting to attend, when are they typically available?
So, so let me put, so this has to be done sooner than later. Because part of Ty and Vaughn is that the next round of funding is in August. For, for the construction money, which is all zero percent, there's going to be forgiveness, not part or total of the loan. And so we, we tested almost a year before we were required to test. So we're ahead of a lot of towns. And before that money dries up, we, I want to be in in August. And we can break ground on a treatment plant as soon as the spring.
So we should, we should be discussing.
I will, I will, yeah. Let's, let's put that on hold.
That I think is something for discussion.
Right, but that's.
But going back to the date that we.
We want it sooner.
Senator Cronin, when can you be, what evening can you be available?
I may overlook my schedule, but I'm happy to, to find a day right in town.
Okay.
Is it, is it easier for you to do a weeknight or is it easier to do a weekend?
Weeknights.
Weeknights are better.
Weeknights.
So I'm, I'm thinking a Monday night because that's the normal water commissioner meeting night?
Why don't we set, when we set seven o'clock?
What day?
And the twenty-eighth of June?
That works.
With a, I know you said, Dave, that it needs to be sooner rather than later.
But we have.
Twenty-eighth of June is fine.
Yeah.
And do we need a, an alternate date or can we just say Monday, the twenty-eighth of June?
What do you guys feel on it?
No, we could do, we could set a firm date on that.
Yeah. I don't think anybody's rented out the, the hall.
The great hall on the Wednesday.
Question, do you want to bring a moderator in to keep control? Or do you think the two chairs can do it or how do you want to do it?
What do you guys think?
It's a discussion about water.
Yeah.
It's going to get ugly.
Now, I don't think so. I, I think, I think.
There's going to be so many questions that, you know, if you as the chair fail, you can handle. Madam Chair, if you fail, you can handle, let's just, I know we're all big boys and girls, we should be able to get along.
You want to do it with me, Todd?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so Todd and I will chair, we'll be the moderators.
All right.
But are you, are you going to?
I have a question after Todd, you got my attention when you brought up the fact about even, can we as private wells? Ronnie said she has a private well, I have a private well too. I mean, in the house, we've been there since nineteen fifty-nine, I've been drinking it all my life.
The average, the average American.
How much can, what I'm saying is, don't cut me off.
Sorry, I apologize.
Should, is it prudent for them as the selectmen to reach out to the private well owners with the same type of urgency as the people that are drinking the town water? You, you and you only probably will be able to look at that and say, is it as great of an issue? But it still is, so I think the private well owners should be inclusive for that degree of education and maybe to get their well tested.
Okay, the only, the only thing I would put on that is that, one, it may not be the water, it may be your own plumbing. And it's been a lot of the case on the private wells. But here's the problem, regardless of that fact, if you do come up with a positive detection, the property then gets labeled as a hazardous waste site. So that's, so that, that, they need to balance, they need to balance, to balance it out.
Private well owners are going to be aware of this. I think that's equally as important as anyone, even if it's town water.
And I think we.
Right here, right now, tonight, to everybody in the town of Townsend that drinks water privately wells or on town water. Six twenty-eight at seven PM, we will be holding a public meeting for public input to give everybody an update as far as the PFAS problem we have in the community with the drinking water. I advise anyone that's got concerns to show up, be there, and have the inputs. It's going to be in the great hall, right here at Town, Town Hall. So once again, seven PM on six twenty-eight, it'll be between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Water Commissioners.
So, thank you, Joe.
Repeat that again, just so I can really wrap that around my head. If I come up on a positive standpoint, I am considered what now again?
Your property could be considered a hazardous site, according to Bureau Wayside cleanup.
Go ahead for your property.
What do you mean, you have to do a twenty-one E? Get it assessed and all the hazardous, the hazard assessed. It's up to the Bureau Wayside Cleanup, they'll come up. From what I understand, they come in and do an assessment and things like that. We're not in an area where they're worried about private wells, to be honest with you, no.
But at the same time, you have to caution.
Yeah, no, and I agree with you. But you have to realize our wells are very much different than yours. Ours are thirty, forty feet deep, two feet in diameter, okay? Bedrock wells, if you have a shallow well, okay. If you're using herbicides and pesticides on your, on your property, what they've found is the insecticides themselves don't have it in it, but the plastic containers that have been fortified to make them so they don't break down.
Yes.
They're fluorinated, which means they're PFAS. So they're absorbing it in from the plastic. So the shallower the well, the more risk you have, the deeper the well, the more protected you are from this.
And I have to take a lot of caution to what I put into anything in the God and do the situation with the bees.
Yep.
I mean, they, they don't even know what is going on with the neonicotines as to what's creating a lot of the problem with the bee habitats right now. So that, it's a lot of gray zone there.
All right, so just moving on to, so that we can get our meeting on track. I have forwarded to both of you what I just typed up about the plans. So take a look at it, get it to whoever is doing the advertising and the planning. Let me know if you need more agenda support.
All right, the advertising, that comes, I.
I can help out with that.
And we, yeah, we can do it with the board, but just so we can talk back and forth and have a starting point.
Understood.
I assume this will be all CC to all the different boards, conservation, planning, et cetera.
Once we have it settled, yes.
Yes.
So.
I'll talk to you after so they can.
All right, we are going to move on to our.
Thank you for your time and look forward to the meeting.
Thank you.
And Senator Cronin, thank you very much for attending. You're welcome to stay as long as you like, the Townsend House is there.
I'll see you again.
Okay. Six forty, our appointment with the recreation. For the appointment with the Recreation Commission regarding the National Fitness Campaign presentation.
Conversations can be put outside, please, while we're in the meeting?
Yeah, if you want to, we're moving on with our meeting, thank you.
Give me one second, I'm trying to get my Bluetooth back online.
All right. So we're doing a Zoom in an, in our live meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Here in the little town of Townsend.
Right.
Yeah. I wanted to make sure that we are on the meeting. We have a guest coming in from California and we're going to make sure that the entire town and whomever has joined us and joined in and participated in it. So let me just get my Bluetooth reconnected and then I will introduce everybody.
Emmy, make sure your mic is close enough to you.
Okay.
And that it's on.
Once my speaker's going, you're going to get it through here.
Okay, all right.
I hope you don't get reflowed. Oh, here we go. Okay. See if we got that going now. Ooh. All righty then. Let me get back where I need to go. Okay, so, hi, everybody. I am, my name is Emmy Hoff and I am the Director of Recreation. And I am here with Jack Linehan and he is our account manager for the National Fitness Campaign. I'm going to show a short video, it's three and a half minutes, about what the National Fitness Campaign is. And from there, we're going to go ahead and I'm going to give the floor to Jack so that you guys can ask any questions you might have of him. Once I do the video too, I'll give a, just a brief overview of what we've looked at previously with the NFC and the challenges that we faced and what we've come up with them. So, Jack, can you hear me? Okay, fantastic. All right, so I'm going to share my screen, see if I can share my screen here and get the campaign up. Let's hope that it's actually going to connect. All right. Okay, folks, everybody, here we go.
We're changing the way America thinks about fitness. With two hundred fitness courts open, our campaign is growing. From college campuses to city parks and trails, we're bringing free fitness everywhere and we're just getting started. Hi, I'm Mitch Menadge, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. The National Fitness Campaign was founded in nineteen seventy-nine when we opened the first fitness court. Redesigned for the twenty-first century, the fitness court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our seven movement, seven minute system allows you to use your own body weight to get the perfect workout. Easy or hard, it will work for you. Our goal is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives so that each day is better than the last. Now more than ever before, it is vital that we move fitness outdoors to remain safe, healthy, and strong.
Michiganders, we, as soon as we can, we go outside, which is one of the reasons why the fitness court was such an attraction to us. What impressed us most was their basic philosophy that they want to provide world-class fitness for free. Truly, anyone can use, no matter what your age is, no matter what your physical fitness level is, no matter what your skills are, it is very adaptable.
Thousands of certified ambassadors will be trained to deliver classes, challenges, and clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. New programs are bringing students outdoors across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway to enroll in these programs. Simply scan the new digital wall with your phone to access a library of free workouts designed to optimize your experience on the fitness court. Learn the moves and take challenges as we dig deep to create impact for our partners across America. This year, we are thrilled to introduce Fitness Court Public Art. Cities have the opportunity to select a local artist to design their fitness court using the power of the arts and fitness outdoors in iconic public spaces. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness court. Building beyond two hundred cities and colleges. Building beyond two hundred cities and colleges, we're partnering with large cities using urban movement data to map the best locations for healthy infrastructure. We're bringing fitness courts to within ten minutes of population centers everywhere.
They provide these wraparound services that from a city's perspective, that's what you want in a partner like this. You want it to come, present it to you on a silver platter with a bow tied around it. They're one of the best partners, I think, that I personally have ever worked with.
We serve almost one point two million members across Michigan. And this partnership really is an opportunity for us to bring scalable, free, health and wellness opportunities for our community. So I would actually invite cities and organizations, big and small, to explore the opportunity to invest in fitness courts. To be very honest with you, the feedback from different municipalities and different communities has been very positive.
We're committed to raise a hundred and fifty million dollars to bring the campaign to one thousand cities and schools building the largest fitness movement in the world. Join us. Let's make world-class fitness free.
Alright, let me stop sharing here. Um, okay, so that is the National Fitness Campaign. Uh, it's pretty amazing. And this is actually our third time around. Uh, we were first approached in twenty nineteen and, um, Jack will talk a little bit more about why Townsend came on the radar um, and what they're looking for with us. And we came before the board at that time and we were, um, looking at location. That's where, really where we were sort of, um, stuck, I guess you could say, at that time, at that time period. Um, and then things with the town sort of moved along and then COVID hit, and now here we are. So, I wanted to just touch base on a couple of things with the National Fitness Campaign before I, I give it over to Jack for questions and answers. Um, health and wellness, as we have all discovered, um, worldwide, truly, um, is of paramount importance. The outdoors, uh, as we know already in Townsend, we have so many treasures with our, with our, um, trails and our parks. Um, we're already well aware of that. And this is just another piece to that puzzle. Um, over the last, I wanna say, hmm, six months, maybe a little bit longer, um, in conjunction with the Planning Board, the Suwannee River Rail Trail, we've worked with, um, planning, housing, conservation, highway, cemetery, and parks um, on both walkability and bikeability studies, as well as the Shared Streets and Spaces, um, grants. And all of that has to do with, again, making our community more accessible to everybody outdoors. Getting us out, getting us moving, doing it safely. And National Fitness Campaign ties right in with that. Um, location-wise, what we're looking for, um, long-term is the Jeff Street location, and that is the, um, empty lot right behind Town Hall. Um, it's accessible, it's visible, we have security thanks to Town Hall. There's parking, it's centrally located for our town with the common retail food and the rail trail. Um, economic development is part of this, commercial and real estate. You know, we're really looking at, um, it being visible to the town, usable by the town. And, um, that's the location that we're, we're requesting going forwards. Uh, it has been suggested in the past that we look at Howard Park, uh, the public parking dirt lot at Riverbank Terrace Jeff Street, the Upper Commons, the Common and the Townsend Meeting Hall, as well as the High School. Um, each of those areas for various reasoning, reasoning, um, none of them work, unfortunately. We're going from no line of sight visibility, we've got no parking, inaccessible, Conservation Trust land, deforestation. Um, we've got the Tressel Bridge, we've got, um, the Historic District, we've got a memorial park there. Um, the High School, their land is, um, we discussed it with them very briefly. Uh, it was really their outdoor sports areas are not available due to the house, the high school growth and use. Um, so we've really, we've, we've been there, we've looked at it. Um, what is land available, what is accessible, what the Grant Committee for the N F C is looking for? And honestly, what is best for our community? Can they get in and out? Can we create something bigger with it, or do we just stop and just plop this down? The goal is to have green space, as well as parking, as well as handicap accessibility, which, as we know, um, in Townsend is woefully inadequate for a lot of what we have currently. Um, and again, that's part of this collaboration, um, in the walkability and bikeability alongside this. So, I really just wanna, you know, put that out there, that we've really looked at that. Um, parking was another, um, challenge that we looked at. And, uh, at the time, um, I had, uh, some drawings done up according to the, um, mass laws. Um, let me see here, um, parking requirements and zoning. Uh, and within that, if we take the space for the fitness court, fence it with a grassy-free zone, um, and leave the front area for parking, put a four-foot handicap up the side, we're still looking at, um, anywhere from twelve to fifteen cars realistically with proper circulation. So, um, I've never counted more than nine vehicles back there in any of our meetings, um, even full-town meetings here at the Great Hall. Uh, and again, we're working very hard right now at Jeff Street to make sure that that parking area is properly signed throughout the town, um, that we get rid of the invasive, um, Japanese knotweed, and that we have proper trailheads for Adams Dam. So, that's where we're looking at on my end. Um, uh, let me see, what else do I have in there? That's really about it. Um, as for the community donation asks, and you did see that that's free, um, funding, Jack will touch on this too, but funding, we get a thirty thousand dollar grant from N F C. Um, and the rest that we're gonna be looking to raise through state and federal grants, we're looking at crowdfunding. Um, we're looking at donations, sponsorships, um, fundraising. And, um, for hard material, I guess you'd say, uh, we're gonna be looking for assistance with concrete and labor, um, the fencing, grass seed, and we're gonna need a storage space of fifteen by fifteen feet for about a month, month and a half, um, while we wait to build our site and the concrete settles. So, that's what I have for N F C. Um, like I said, Jack's here, uh, he's gonna handle your Q and A. And I have, um, I do have some flyers here, some Quality of Life, if anybody wants one, when we're done. Um, and I believe each of the board members has one already. Uh, okay, Jack, let's get you unmuted and get you- Alright, I think you are up and running. I'm gonna, I'm gonna push, send you over to the board here too, so that you have someplace to look. Alright. You got that? Are you still up? Okay. Jack, can you hear us?
I can.
Awesome.
Does everyone hear me?
He's too low.
So are you guys getting him? He's too low. Let me see if I can get that, if I can get this back up. It looks like it's supposed to be running. Give me one second. Let's see if I can, did I just lose for some reason? Hmm, I'm up at a hundred percent. Let me just check my, check the Bluetooth really quick. It beeped, so I don't know if I just lost it. Uh, Bluetooth, try this again, guys. Sorry, Jack.
No problem.
Technical difficulties, gotta love it, right? It says I'm connected.
He's there, it's just not loud.
Yeah, it's just not, we're not getting-
Not very loud, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, my-
Put your microphone next to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me stick this here and see if I can-
Put your microphone.
Yeah, let me, see if I can pop this over here.
There you go.
Alright, let's see if I can get you into my speaker here. Alright, oh, let me. Alright, let's see if I can get this. I'm not a good lefty here. I'm trying. Okay, alright, let's see if we can get you loud enough that they can hear you. Alright, go ahead. We'll see what I'm getting for sound.
Alright, can everyone hear me?
You guys getting him yet? Try again?
They're very quiet.
Can everybody hear me? Hello, hello?
I'm gonna-
Very faint.
Yeah, it's very faint. Hold on one second, guys. Dave, can you, can you replug this in maybe and see if that's, see if that's working? Cause yeah, this isn't really getting much in the way of sound either.
You're you, Emmy.
You got me? Yeah. Alright. Jack, can you say something?
Yep, I'm here.
Yeah, it's not, it's just not coming through. Yeah, it is.
It's either on or off.
Yeah, it's either on or off. I don't know why, all of a sudden it just went out, and it shouldn't be out. I'm sorry, everybody. Let me see if I can, um, if I can put him on and maybe stick the mic over here. Maybe we can get it loud as we possibly can. I don't know how I lost it.
Do we have any speakers in the other room?
No, I'm just-
That we can, do we have speakers in the other room that we can-
A little frustrating. I've got it up all the way.
Nothing, we can hook up correctly.
Let me, um, let me un, let me unhook the Bluetooths and see if I can get you louder from that, okay? Bluetooths. Let me just get it. Oh. Okay. Alright, let me turn Bluetooth off and maybe we'll get better sound. It worked earlier, guys, I swear. We had it, it was, it was, we tested it all out. Alright, Jack, go ahead.
Alright, can everyone hear me?
Can we, can you guys get him?
Yeah.
Can you guys get him at all?
Well, why don't we just ask the questions anyway?
Alright.
And then you can translate, we can, you know, play telephone.
Okay, let's do that. Alright, we'll try that. Alright, alright, so, um, Jack Linehan, um, with N F C, this is the board. Um, we've got Chad Sexton-Geranian, Joseph Schenk, and Veronica Kell. And, um, yeah, they've got some questions for you, I think.
Fantastic.
Got it? He said fantastic.
Yeah. Um, so I guess my, my first question is total cost for the course to install? I'm looking at dollars here. And then maintenance, is that included? Somehow, do you have numbers on maintenance? What kind of maintenance do you need going forward to keep it going?
Yeah, um, so Emmy, do you, am I talking to you and then you're gonna-
Yeah, so I'm gonna, yeah, let's do it that way. So, um-
Alright.
Veronica asked for-
Maintenance costs?
Cost, and then, uh, total cost, and then what we're looking at for maintenance costs.
Yep, yep. So with the thirty thousand dollar, uh, Healthy City Grant that we're gonna be awarding Townsend?
Yep.
The total funding requirement is going to be a hundred and ten thousand?
Okay.
Plus installation, which is a separate cost, right? So if you all, basically if you all take care of installation of the concrete slab and assembly in-house, we're looking at a range of probably a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen thousand out the door.
One ten to-
One ten to one fifteen thousand out the door. That's not including installation of the concrete slab. And again, that's, we're looking donation-wise, and this is including the thirty thousand dollar grant that they have, um, awarded us already.
So this is over and above the thirty K, or, or is the thirty K inclusive?
The thirty, it's the hundred ten to a hundred and fifteen includes the thirty K already.
Okay.
Correct?
Yep, correct, yep.
So approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
And then, yeah, we're, so-
One sixty.
One sixty.
Once we go into the artwork, right?
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and so if you all are bidding out the concrete slab and the, you go with our national installation partner, who is E I S, right?
They use E I S if we decide to use them for installation.
Which is what most, um, most communities do, just because it's turnkey and it's easy and they, you know, they wrote the manual on this thing. They know how to, you know, screw in all the bolts fairly quickly. Um, that gives us, um, a funding requirement increase of, depending on what your local concrete costs are, between thirty-five thousand and sixty thousand, right? So, basically, you're able to neutralize, yep?
So you can kinda hear while you read what he's talking about. There you go.
So you all are able to neutralize the installation of the concrete, those costs, as well as the assembly costs, if you take care of it in-house. If you bid out the concrete and, um, utilize our installation partner, um, that, again, it depends on what your local concrete costs are. That price range I've seen between thirty-five thousand and sixty thousand. That is the range I would give.
Did you guys hear all that? So we're looking at baseline, you know, about one ten, one fifteen, and then depending on what we decide to do with, again, the concrete slab's gonna be a big part of it, that walkway up the side, um, to make sure that we're A D A compliant. You know, we, we could look up to-
Excuse me, Emmy, Emmy, could you, uh, make sure your mic, your speaker, your mic-
Yeah, we could, we could look that, um, we could be up to a hundred and sixty thousand at that point. And again, keeping in mind, we're not asking the taxpayers to pay this, alright? This is crowdfunding, fundraising, grants, sponsorships, okay? So let me make that very clear again. As of right now, and what we're looking at, a hundred and sixty thousand, let's make it just nice and kind, just in case we don't get that concrete, um, assist. We're gonna be going forward and utilizing as many resources as we possibly can in order to get that hundred and sixty K, okay? So, got everybody got that? Alright.
No, no cost to the town.
Correct.
Yes.
That's what we're looking at. That's where we're going, that's where we're going for. Alright, what else we got, guys?
As far as the site? Is that, where'd we come up with that site? Is that the most reasonable place for it to be? I mean, I think that was, the property was bought for parking, of course, for Town Hall. So, where, where does that stand?
Well, it wasn't actually. Um, it was bought, uh, uh, my understanding is the initial was to grow this complex because it's outside of historic. Oh, it's outside of the Historic District? I got it.
Emmy.
I got it, Hartley. Uh, sorry, I'm here. I moved it. Um, so with the actual use and publicity for the Jeff Street parking, which a lot of times actually doesn't get used, and the grass does here, um, which we really shouldn't be, cause it's, it's not A D A compliant. So we really shouldn't be parking cars back there currently anyway, um, is my understanding. But, um, as I said, when it goes in, we do have the ability to actually make a parking lot with it. An actual parking lot that is safe for our community, that is lit, that does have a walkway that is handicap accessible to get to Town Hall, um, and to the road. So that's kind of what we're looking at. And yes, um, I think Veronica has, I only did one, just because it's so much color. There's a flip sheet that they actually did for us in twenty nineteen, where N F C itself did research into the sites that, um, were put in front of us, um, by a community member to look at. And what their primary site look was, um, what they considered could possibly be secondary sites because of the locations, again, the use, visibility, and their grant requirements, and then what is absolutely not at all, even in the running.
I, I guess my question is, the other, I can see where this could be a good location, especially with the rec building right there, for, um, the kids to use. What about the, um, piece of property that's kinda between Hawthorne Brook and the, um, Senior Center there?
So my understanding, um, of that, and we actually, I know this because we tried to get the circus to be allowed to go there. Because of the septic underneath it, or the, the ground underneath it, we weren't even allowed to have the circus in because the tent spikes were too long. So the, there's not to be any construction within that area. That's why it was left as it was, yeah. And that was an area that we looked at, but because of the parking from the schools, again, the, the actual, it's not, it's not usable for construction because of the depth, um, and what's underground. Um, and then the, the buildings that are already there and the traffic from the schools. Again, visibility would be great, because we have the meeting hall there, and we have the Senior Center and the library. But, um, it's not necessarily, it's not actually usable at all.
So I, I guess going back to my first question about the funding, um, it has more to do with maintenance of, of that, um, course. How, you know, the, the equipment, um, gets old, it gets rusty, um, you know, it, how, what, is there a maintenance plan available for that, so that we would know what needs to be done and about how much we would have to raise each year to keep it going?
So Jack, can you just speak to the maintenance? I know I have some files, I can get them later. Um, but can you speak to what you have, um, for the, the courts that have already been in the ground and what you guys expect from your equipment?
Absolutely. So, the, uh, new campaign that was revamped in two thousand and twelve of the fitness courts that began then, um, so it's been almost a decade. Um, there have been, of the two hundred courts currently live across the country, there are probably only, um, seven to ten courts that have needed any sort of significant maintenance. Um, that would mean, uh, replacement parts. Everything is really made to last decades here, so it's really kind of a bomb-proof, um, uh, playground. All the court elements are carbon-plated steel. Um, and they are, there's a anti-graffiti laminate over the mural wall in the back. So, really, these are weatherproof, um, and they require very, very little maintenance. I would say the most I've seen is, um, a few replacement parts being needed for some courts, um, in Texas and Florida, where it's a little bit saltier, there's more humidity. Um, but as far as, um, the four, the three courts we currently have in Massachusetts that have been in the ground for a few years at this point, um, maintenance costs maybe a hu, a couple hundred dollars a year at most. It really is not very much at all.
I will say that when we discussed this, again, this was a question that was asked a couple of years ago, um, that the primary in the maintenance is a snowblower, if we wanna use it in the winter, cause, you know, I mean, let's be real. Some of us crazy people, we- Some of us crazy people, we still go out and we do fitness out in the snow. So, um, you know, a snow blower is an option, you know, weed whacker, keeping the area around it clear from grass. You know, it's not a huge high maintenance. Um, there is a full maintenance plan and, um, maintenance rundown and warranty. Um, again, I have the whole, the whole book, you guys have access to it, uh, to, if you wanna delve into it a little bit closer. And I think what we discussed back in twenty nineteen is what they saw for a peak was a thousand dollars a year, and that's including, you know, going out and snow blowing it and handling trash and that sort of thing.
Um, there was also, if I may jump in, um, there was a survey done, um, through, was it Survey Monkey?
Yes, we did a survey through Survey Monkey, as well as hard copies, um, back, again, this was twenty nineteen into twenty twenty. I wanna say we did, it was that late fall, and overwhelmingly, the response was positive. I think we had an eighty-two percent go rate, um, from what we received back from the survey. And they asked questions like, would you like to have, um, a outdoor fitness court? Is it okay with you if it's primarily adults and not young children? Would you like it to be handicap accessible and centrally located? You know, stuff like that, um, and, you know, zero to five, yes to no, sort of questions. I do have numbers for those, I didn't bring them tonight, but I do have numbers, and we did do a survey, um, and have quite a bit of public conversation about this, again, a couple of years ago.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think it's a, a good thing to have something outside. Fitness, I think, is important in all our lives, as we all seem to be getting a little bit older. Central located right in the center of town would be something good, maybe attract more people to the rail trails and everything else. So that's what I have to say.
We have several different grant projects going on, um, shared streets and spaces, we've got the walkability, bikeability, um, and that is a central location, 'cause that'll tie everything in together.
Wild and scenic.
Wild and scenic for, yep, so, um, you know, I, I, I think, what it, what would be, what do you think is our next step?
So I think next step, and after talking with Jack, 'cause what we're gonna be looking for within sixty days is a resolution of adoption, but I think really we should have some public conversation first. Um, I'd like to put the campaign video out on our social media and on our website. I would, I'm more than happy to run another survey and be available for questions, but I would like to have some sort of public education session of some kind, where we can present what we're looking for and what we are, before we actually come to the board with the request for the resolution of adoption, which is our agreement to accepting the grant and this process.
So, um, public education session.
Yes.
Mine's a little bit more fun than PFAS, though.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't wanna do it at the same time as PFAS, that would be not a good plan.
No, not thinking that's a good thing.
If you could give us a suggested day for that? Um, when you think it would be good? And, um, and, uh, we'll go from there.
Well, my thoughts are, if, if, um, if you're okay with it, um, I can go over with your rec meeting, we can come up with that, and then I can bring it back to the board.
That would be perfect.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Jack, did you have anything else that you wanted to make sure that the board was aware of? Especially with your, um, you know, your familiarity with the other NFC courts that are here in Massachusetts?
Well, I mean, an update, I could, I could provide a camp, campaign update, which was, um, pretty exciting. We just awarded and shipped out a fitness court, in fact, on Friday of this past week to Everett, Massachusetts, right outside of Boston.
Everett.
And, um, you know, I always encourage, um, you know, new partners, um, hopefully you all will become a partner with us, um, to, um, call up, you know, other director of recreation heads, um, other stakeholders at other communities, and just see how their experience went, you know? It's always, it's, it's great to hear me talk about it, but I'm, uh, obviously a huge advocate, I'm a little biased, but it's nice to speak to, um, other folks who have worked with us, just to learn about their experience, so, um, I would encourage that.
I had one other thing, Jack. Can you tell us why Townsend was approached with NFC? 'Cause we didn't come looking for you. So can you tell us why, um, you approached Townsend and why you've come back, even when we weren't able to make it that first time?
Yeah, you know, I think, um, well, for one, Emmy, I think you're a great champion, and, and knowing your familiarity with the program, um, made it an easier conversation, at least, third time around. So I think there was some familiarity with the program. And I think, you know, your efforts as a town to improve bikeability, walkability, and, um, healthy pedestrian movement overall, we see and recognize that. Not all towns are, are moving in that direction, and, you know, I think that was a standout, um, with, with Townsend. And then, you know, the Reston project you, you all put together with, um, the Shared Streets and Spaces project, you know, we, we look at some of that movement and, and, and our folks in communities really making big efforts and budgeting, um, for healthy infrastructure in the community, so, for all those reasons, we thought you guys would be, uh, appropriate to approach again.
Awesome, thank you so much, Jack. I am going to, unless anybody has any other questions, I'm gonna let him go for the evening.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack, for your time. We'll talk probably in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Just clear that out. Okay, so, um, I don't know if you had anything else for me under NFC. Like I said, I have an entire book, we can go over any specific questions you have, I can address all those mis, you know, the miscellaneous and the minutia of them. Um, I did wanna say really quickly, too, what's really super cool about this and different than other, 'cause you can buy pieces of fitness courts elsewhere, like in playground equipment books and stuff like that, but this has an app, and it has a full infrastructure, with instructions, with community, with challenges. I mean, it's just bigger than just plopping the equipment in the middle of the town and hoping people show up. So, um, that's another reason that I really think that this is going to be phenomenal for this town. It really gives us a chance to have, um, groups of people together, and, um, working with each other, challenging each other, and, um, making it bigger than just, like I said, a piece of equipment sitting in the backyard.
I think it'll also assist with the rec department, too, as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, thank you all for your time. I'm gonna disconnect everything.
Thank you.
Good job.
Disconnect all things.
All right, well, we were gonna have a seven o'clock executive session, but Bobby isn't here.
Okay.
We're still gonna, you are here.
I'm here.
I'm sorry.
It's not good.
Bobby's here. We have, uh, an appointment with, um, Jim Smith, so I would like to do that first. Are you good with that? If we, 'cause I booked an hour for the executive session, and I don't know that we all need all of that. So, Jim, if you wanna come up and we can talk bridges. Over here, or if you're more comfortable there, either way.
Jump in the hot seat, Jimmy.
Yeah.
I'm not comfortable either way.
Let me get to all the info on this. Thanks for sending that, by the way.
Did you get a chance to read through it?
I read through, I didn't, not every detail, but I did read through enough to look at those bids and the first bidder and all of that.
The big numbers and-
So, yeah, it's great. So let me get to my stuff on that.
I got it.
Okay, so, um, this is two point four, Highway Department. All right, so, tell us about it.
So I just wanted to touch base with you folks, just to see, make sure that we're all on the same page, how we wanna, where we're at with the project, how we wanna proceed going forward with it, the Greenville Road Bridge Project. In short, I guess, a little bit of history. In two thousand nineteen, we received a grant for five hundred thousand. With that grant, we had a deadline to meet, which was actually this month. COVID hit, fast forward, COVID hit, everything shut down. We applied for a, uh, extension, we, we're granted that extension. The new deadline is September twenty-twenty-two.
Oh, good.
Fast forward again, things start picking up, the engineering's complete, we go out to bid. We, um, we get the bids back, and, once that happens, our engineering firm, which is Green International, um, does a bid analysis, just to make sure everything's on the up and up.
And that's in here?
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, all the bidders meet the qualifications and such. During that process, they found that the lowest bidder, um, didn't submit all the paperwork, they didn't have all the documentation. That lowest bidder saw that as well, withdrew their bid. So, that brings us to the second lowest bidder, which came in at one point two. Now, the town had funded back in two thousand nineteen, I believe, two hundred thousand to go towards the engineering, so we have two hundred thousand of our monies tied up. If we don't have this completed by September of twenty-twenty-two, we lose that five hundred, and then we, we pay the full boat.
So-
In short. So I kinda broke it down, I don't know, did you guys all receive the, the estimate kinda?
That's, it's in-
I drew up.
It's the second lowest bid estimate?
Yes.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's in the SharePoint.
Yeah, I printed it off, how'd you get it find it?
So there's a ten percent contingency in there? You guys all familiar with that's all about?
That's for, for in case anything happens.
Yeah, yeah, unforeseen costs. Um, the resident engineering, that's for a part-time engineer from Green to oversee the project. I'm not a bridge engineer.
No, I, it's a good expense.
I never claimed to be. So I believe, you know, it's in the best interest of the town if we were to have that service. Um, that came in at seventy-eight-six. With all that, you're at one point four. Minus the five hundred for the grant, you're at the nine, you know, nine hundred and seventy-seven, eight ninety-eight.
So the two hundred towards engineering, what does that cover? Has that already been spent?
That, for the, for the engineering plans, um, the consultations, yeah.
That's not what it's spent?
Most of it.
Okay.
Yeah, they're still billing us monthly on that. I come up with, for FY twenty-two, the Chapter Ninety allotment, um, providing it's, it's passed, which it usually does, we're gonna, we're gonna receive four hundred and thirteen thousand, eight twenty-eight. Now, if we use that, that's all the Chapter Ninety money that we have.
No roads.
We're gonna go another year without no roads.
So, you know, we do have those funds coming in. Um, the, the ARPA funds, the American Recovery Program.
I'm not too familiar with it, but-
And it, it only just came out, like, the past month.
Yep.
And, um, I, I'm not sure about that one point eight million, the extra, over and above. I know, actually, I have the paperwork for it in that bag, that it's nine hundred ninety-four K, and it can be used for infrastructure.
Infrastructure, absolutely.
And, um, I know we have water things that we're gonna have to do in town, too.
Correct.
So, that pretty, and the other things, we don't really, um, we don't have hospital workers. Now, we might be able to use some for fire or police. You can use some of the funding for the different revenues that you, we didn't take in because of COVID. You know, the restaurants were closed, the, but it isn't huge, it's maybe five percent of, I mean, it's a very, very small amount of money. And then there's a formula that they apply, so you don't get the total difference between what you've got.
Any medical equipment because of the COVID, the PPP, all of that stuff.
Right. Yeah. But what I don't know is, because this was already in the works, can we use the funds for that?
Right.
So that would be something to talk to Senator Cronin about.
Yeah, that's part of the conversation that we will definitely be having shortly.
Yeah, and the other-
Because it just stated infrastructure, didn't say new infrastructure, so if it's infrastructure-
Well, there was, it just came out this afternoon that there were, um, partial guidelines to a lot of it. See, it's, it's still, it's-
Evolving.
Yeah, it's, actually, the information on a daily basis is coming out to be, um, it, I think the way it looks is that it's going to be infrastructure that we can use, um, for the roads, and for, um, you know, that we're gonna need some for some of the water. The water department is looking at other grants, um, involved in it. They're looking for other, I say smaller items, but they're high cost when it comes to water, but I know a couple of wells may need generators and that kinda stuff, so, um, I think we'll be able to, to use the funding for that as well, if we needed it.
Looking at this, I mean, we've already started the work, correct?
Yes, we're pretty, we're well into it.
And so we're committed as a town.
We're pretty committed. So, I had thought, um, once we got the bids back, you know, I was, myself, I was a little shocked at the, at what they came in at.
Numbers.
Again, I'd hate to use this as an excuse, but COVID hit, everything went through the roof.
Right.
Um, unfortunately, it's just bad timing. So, I had thought, listen, let's go back out to bid and see if we can get the numbers down. I'd spoken to the engineers, they seemed to think that it would actually go the other way.
Yeah.
I think that's-
It would actually increase, so it would be kinda shooting ourselves in the foot.
Um, and Mr. Smith, I don't wanna lose the five hundred thousand.
I do not, either.
No, I think-
We've asked for one extension, I'm not sure if they're gonna give us another.
That's my concern as well, so.
I mean, as a part of that's been granted, we, the boards have had you move forward, so I think we need to just figure out what we gotta do.
Keep our foot on the gas and-
Yeah, just move forward.
Sure.
Okay, so the next, can COVID or ARPA funds be applied? Be the thing I'd wanna find out? So when do you need, when do you need to know, um, for final, you know?
As, as soon as possible, I guess, it, there's no set date. I still haven't, I haven't reached out to the second lowest bidder, only because I wanted to get your thoughts on it, um, but that's just a matter of a, of a phone call.
Your, your estimate here for Chapter Ninety funds, the four hundred thirteen thousand, is that just based upon standards that we've had in the past?
That's, yeah, we got a, we got a letter, um, and that's what we're projected to get, for FY twenty-two.
Correct, now, when, when did you get this letter? Because I, I don't know if they-
Back in February, I believe.
'Cause I'm wondering if they're changing it because of the COVID situation and, and all of that.
To be honest, I'll get another letter probably, uh, the end of July, beginning of, of August. That's usually the, when we, when we receive it from the state.
And you don't anticipate that going down?
I can make a phone call, uh, to Mike O'Hara, who I deal with through Chapter Ninety.
Yeah. And get those, get those answers. To see if they bumped up additional funds, I'm, 'cause I'm, I'm hearing, I don't know how true it is, but I'm hearing that they're adding more funds to the Chapter Ninety.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah.
I know they did last year as well.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and again, this is all in motion, you know?
Twenty-four thousand or so.
Okay, so maybe what we need to do is explore where the money's coming from.
Yes.
And, um, all right.
So what would be our action item here, Madam Chair?
So would you reach out to the Senator first?
Well, I would reach out to, um, yeah, I think so.
And on my end, I can reach out to Mike from the state, Chapter Ninety.
And to find out, I, I guess to find out more information from Senator Cronin or Susan Templeton, on how those funds can be used.
You know, talk to Sheila as well, she may have some ideas as well.
Yeah, so that we can go forward with this. So, um, I, I have a question, so is the culvert gonna be larger?
It's the same size.
It's the same size?
It's the same size, it's a three-sided culvert. So basically, it has-
I saw the whole thing, does your company do three-sided culverts?
It, it has no bottom, so the frogs and, and everything can still have traction.
Okay, so the- So it will accommodate climate change, I guess is what I'm wondering.
It, what?
Will it accommodate climate change? Like, larger weather events than normal?
Yes, yes. It's been all approved by the state. The state's been, been involved throughout the whole process, um, so, and they continue to be so.
Jimmy, are you referring on Greenville Road to three culverts that are by Wintersfield, or is this the bar further up?
Above it, further up. Yeah, there's a few barrels out there now. Basically, where we stopped paving. We didn't wanna continue paving, we're just gonna rip it up, so.
So what are we looking at for timing with, with? I mean, it sounds to me that we need to do it sooner rather than later, right?
Exactly.
Um, Jared and I are meeting tomorrow morning to put in, you have to apply for the funds, I think I mentioned this?
Yeah.
And so we're meeting tomorrow morning, there's only one question that he has on the, um- And so we're meeting tomorrow morning, there's only one question that he has on the, to, there are steps that we need to go through to get the funds. And so we got, I think I forwarded it to you from Brian Sweeney today, that saying, your, your community has not yet applied for the funds, and you need to apply by June 30th.
Right.
So we're meeting tomorrow morning to apply, so we're sure we get the funds. It's all, these funds are funds that have been given to us, but that does not mean your community gets them. Your community has to ask for them to get them.
And then give reasoning on why we need the funds, kind of thing.
Right.
So what I can do is I'll talk to both the Senator and Representative Harrington, and I can report back in one of our work sessions if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah.
That's okay. And then if you're going to be talking with the treasurer, then maybe we can kind of get this as quickly, you know, the answer to you, so that we can move forward.
Okay.
I just, again, I don't want to lose the $500,000 that we already.
Oh, no.
No, we can't. Because then we lose 500 plus the 200 that we done on all the engineering.
And there's a few projects that's still lingering out there, you know, that's a whole nother story for a whole nother day, but.
We'll talk another time.
We don't want this, this project to happen the same way, so.
So, yeah, this one's underway, right.
Continue with those other ones to get those buttoned up.
So when do you need to know by, as far as moving forward goes? As far as awarding the bids, like how long, how long are these bids good?
Well, the lowest, for the lowest bidder, it was 30 days, that's, that's up.
That's done, right.
So it's, it's just a matter of a phone call. So I'll reach out tomorrow to the second lowest bidder.
Okay.
And I'll get, you know, their thoughts on it, a timeline when they think they can, you know, get the project complete. They're obviously going to want to start sooner than later, so.
Right.
Really, if we, the faster we get going, the better off we are.
How long does it take to complete the project? Like, when do we have to start to meet that September 2022 deadline?
Well, as long, if everything was going as planned, they were going to start this fall.
Okay.
So. And then you figure we have a year from the September, September 30th, 2022 is, is the deadline.
That's, we can do that, we could do that.
All right, so get back.
Okay, perfect. And I'll be, I'll be, I'll be receiving an email from you?
More than likely.
Okay.
Or, yeah.
Jazz you.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll let you know how I make out with, with Mike and the bidder.
And the Mike, the chapter.
From Chapter 90. Yep. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy, good job.
Enjoy your evening.
Keep up the good work.
So, so it is 7:33, and we are going to move into executive session. So we haven't done this in a long time, have we? So we'll be, so I'm looking for a motion to move into executive session and returning to open session.
Madam Chair, I move that we move that we go into executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, where litigation of any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the beginning, on the bargaining or litigating positions of public body, and the chair so declares this is a tentative agreement with the AFSMI Clerical Supervisors, Highway, Water, and Police, and return to open session afterwards.
Second.
All those in favor?
George Shink, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calle, yes. And we're in open session, so we probably don't have to give our names anymore, do we?
No, actually, we don't.
All right, so thank you very much. If you could all just step out for a bit, and we'll call you back when we're.
How much is going to be left on the meeting after the executive? Not much?
Well, we have the appointments of all the police, we have the Energy Committee, and a few other things, so that would be it.
Good luck, you play football.
Good luck. Jimmy, thank you.
Thank you.